All right, thank you everybody for joining us for the this Tuesday, January 24th special meeting to consider referendum for the purchase of fire trucks. This time, if you could please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. At this time, I'll call for nominations for our moderator. Ann.
I would like to nominate Brian McDermott as moderator of the town council.
Okay, I'll move to have Brian McDermott be the moderator of this meeting. Can I get a second? Thank you. All in favor.
Thank you very much for that resounding vote of confidence. I appreciate that. It's wonderful to be here tonight as a town meeting where this is a really old fashioned kind of a system where we have a call to all the residents of a town to come to the town center and listen to a proposal before them and then we all get to raise our hands and vote yes or no. It's really kind of quaint and classical. So I'm enjoying the process here tonight to be able to be the moderator and my aspect of my job here is to try to help the show run a little smoother. So we're going to be able to listen to each other, be able to listen to the proposal and make an informed decision by the end of the night. Just kind of want to give you a couple of housekeeping measures and how the process goes tonight because you're going to hear a lot of motions to be able to waive the reading of certain proposals or certain resolutions and that's not a vote on something you're missing out on. It saves us some time to be able to sit here and listen to reading pages and pages and pages of information if the members of the town of Avon so feel fit to do that. You will have a, you'll hear me go through a process of a series of motions to be able to accomplish that. Then you're going to hear a full proposal by the fire marshal and from some of the town leaders here, from the town council and from the board of finance. There's going to be an opportunity to have discussion after that. So all of you will be able to have that opportunity to come up to either microphone on either side of the room, have two or three minutes to say your piece and then we're going to have an opportunity to put the motion to the floor and all the residents of Avon who are here and duly assigned in by the town registrars will be able to vote on that motion. We have two motions tonight that we're going to be able to put forward. So if that sounds, sounds good to all of you, I just wanted to give you that update and where we're, where we're going and how the process is, is going to work. So first, I would be able to, in accordance with the town charter, announce that the town clerk, Nick Hogan, will act as clerk of this meetings, meeting in accordance with the town charter. And I would look for a motion to be able to waive the call of the meeting. Ann Clark?
I would like to waive the reading of the motion.
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Opinion of the chair, the ayes have it. Let's call on the town council chairman, Dan Palamas.
So yeah, at this point, we will, rather than read through the extensive resolution that you see in your, your handouts, I'd like to make a motion that we waive the reading of this. So, let's see. Move that the reading of the first resolution entitled Resolution Appropriating $1,259,000 for the acquisition of a fire engine and authorizing the issuance of $1.259 million of bonds of the town to meet said appropriation impending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose, being presented to the special town meeting as stated in the notice be waived and that the full text of the resolution as made available to those in attendance at this meeting be incorporated into the minutes of this meeting.
Is there a second to that motion, waiving the reading of the resolution? Motions were made in second. All those in favor waiving the reading of the resolution, say aye. Opposed, say nay. All those, opinion of the chair, the ayes have it. So we don't have to read that motion. Back to you, Dan.
Yeah, okay. So now we will do the same thing for the, the second resolution. So I'll make a motion that the reading of the second resolution entitled Resolution Appropriating $2.172 million for the acquisition of a ladder truck and authorizing the issuance of $2.172 million of bonds of the town to meet said appropriation impending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose, being presented to the special town meeting as stated in the notice be waived and that the full text of the resolution as made available to those in attendance at this meeting be incorporated into the minutes of this meeting.
Motion's been made. Is there a second? Motion made in second. All those in favor waiving the reading of the resolution, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. And the opinion of the chair, the, the, the moderator, the ayes have it. So I'd like to ask town chairman, Dan Palamas, to start the presentation.
First of all, I'd just like to take a minute to recognize everybody here in the audience. Thank you for coming out and participating, performing your civic duty. Welcome everybody online as well. And most importantly, I know we have a lot of volunteer firefighters with us here today. Thank you all from the town of Avon. Your service is much appreciated by all of us. And I think, you know, even this weekend, we had a reminder of the sacrifice that you make with the incident in Meriden where, where several firefighters were hospitalized. So as always, thank you from the town. So tonight's program, next slide please, we'll look over an overview of the proposed purchases. We'll get an overview of the financial impact here. Then we'll have a question and answer session. And then as Brian mentioned, this will all come down to a hand vote at the end. So the questions for tonight, number one, shall the resolution appropriating $1.259 million for the acquisition of a fire engine and authorizing the issuance of $1.259 million of bonds and temporary borrowings of the town for such purpose be approved? And the second, the similar resolution for $2.172 million for the acquisition of a ladder truck rather than a, a fire engine. Now these, these two vehicles, I'd say they, they probably came on, at least as far as I remember, they came on our radar spring of last year. And at that point, we, we started discussing the right way to, right way to finance these, whether to go through bonds or not. And, and that leads us to today, that this, we, over the course of the year, we've had a fire study complete. That fire study confirmed the need for, for these vehicles. That fire study can be found online if you're interested. It is a very comprehensive review of our, of our, you know, current vehicular fleet as well as our future needs. Again, these two trucks not only were identified by our volunteer fire department, but by a third party performing this review. And so today, you know, we've had a very busy January discussing this, this topic. And, and part of the reason for that is we learned that the price of these fire trucks increases by three to five percent February 1st. So that, that's why we've had several iterations of special town meetings to try and bring this to you so we can move forward on this and avoid the five percent price hike. So, so what are the proposals today? The proposals are to replace two pieces of fire apparatus in the fleet. Our oldest fire engine, which is the 2001 HME GK, engine 14, would be replaced by a new Pierce PUC pumper. And number two, the existing 2001 Rosenbauer HME Metz Ladder Truck, Ladder 12 would be replaced with a new Pierce Enforcer mid-mount 100-foot tower ladder truck with a pump. And to tell you a lot more about these than I'm able to, I'd like to welcome our chief up here, Bruce Appel. Thanks, Bruce.
All right. I'll talk to you a little bit about the apparatus and some of the history back, actually probably starting about five years ago, we started looking at the fleet as we constantly do our five-year assessment and our planning study for the apparatus. As Dan had mentioned, that they identified, we identified engine 14 and ladder 12 needing to be replaced. Engine 14 is reaching its end of life expectancy. The NFPA standard talks about a 15-year life expectancy. We see in Avon about 20 years to 25 years of active service. The trucks today, because of the supply chain issues, are taking about two years to come in. And so it's very difficult to plan if you have a catastrophic failure. So we have been sinking money with the town maintenance department, has identified engine 14 as a higher need priority to be replaced. It's one of our busiest engine companies. It's stationed over here at company three, so it responds to most of the calls in town. So it, with that, you know, we've been finding that we're starting to run into parts availability issues. And we put in about $65,000 into repairs over the last couple of years for that. Ladder 12, again, it's 22 years, we're looking at about 24 years by the time it gets replaced. The manufacturer does load tests every year. They've determined that there's a hydraulic leak under the main swivel of the aerial device. And pretty extensive repairs, upwards of $100,000, $120,000 just to repair that one major component of the aerial. And then they're like, well, if you have it all off the truck, then you might as well completely refurbish the whole truck, all the wiring and stuff to the aerial device. And that starts getting exponentially expensive for a truck that's already 22, 24 years. Along with downtime of at least six to, six to eight months, it'd be out of service because it would have to go back to the manufacturer to be repaired. You know, again, the design of these trucks, we have, we look at the community, we look at the, our facilities, the firehouses, so we have to be able to get the trucks into our facilities. We have older facilities, so the trucks have to be designed to be able to get into the, into the stations. And then we look at our community about how we respond and, and be able to get to everywhere that we service. So we look for typically smaller sized trucks, more maneuverably, more compact. And the Puck enforcer from Pierce is a pretty compact unit and about 32 feet long. You'll see some diagrams, a picture of it here and the diagrams out in the front lobby. Increased horsepower, increased turning maneuverability, increased pumping capacity. Our typical trucks are running 1,500 gallons per minute. This one will be 2,000 gallons per minute, but it's a, it's a PTO-driven pump, which means it's a very simple pump, a lot easier on the maintenance of the truck. And then it meets all the new crash, NFPA crash tests, rollover stability, airbag, full airbags in the cab. And that's a picture of the engine that they're proposing to replace. The aerial device is 100-foot mid-mount tower. This truck coming in would be, again, increased horsepower, increased safety standards for our firefighters, or again, rollover stability, airbag, airbag systems in the cab. This truck, unlike our existing truck, would be coming through with a pump and a tank, 2,000 gallon per minute pump, which will allow the department to reduce our fleet by actually one major truck. So we have five current pumpers in the fleet. Then we carry, we have one tanker, one rescue and one ladder. So through the study that we went through governmental, Center for Governmental Research, through an outside firm, confirm that we can eliminate one of the pumpers. We're actually going down to four, which would be Class A pumpers. So our oldest truck, which is actually a 1993 pumper, which is still in service, is actually coming off the line. And the Puck pumper would be replacing that, but we're keeping the pumping capacity by adding the pump on the aerial device, which means basically in a, in a situation where we have lower manpower in a volunteer department, we're, have a multi-purpose rig. So it gets out the door first and it can actually start applying water onto a fire once it gets there if it happens to be first due. This is a rendering of that device, aerial. So again, we have to take into consideration the heights requirements of the trucks. Again, getting into the stations, our heights and our lengths and our bays are fairly tight. But, and that's why we came up with, ended up with this design. That's pretty much as far as the, the two apparatus. I believe we have chairman on the board of finance talk about.
Next up, we have Catherine Schalzert, who is the chairman of the board of finance to give you some of the run-through of the numbers.
Good evening, everyone. As you can see from the chart on the screen, the purchase and financing costs for the ladder and the pump. The purchase price for the ladder is $2,123,309. The pumper, $1,210,182. Similar debt issuance costs for each vehicle and the totals stated below that. The next part of this is the estimated financial impact of purchasing both of these vehicles. The two questions to consider are, can the town manage the additional debt? If so, what will the additional and total tax impact be on each household? The next chart shows, and hopefully Ben was able to see this, the, the blue bar graph shows the existing debt that we have on, that we're paying down right now and the red is the proposed debt. Next slide, please. The estimated tax impact for just the fire engine, it's important to read the very fine print at the bottom, which is why I have my reading glasses, assumes 20-year borrowing period, interest rate of four percent, not capitalized. And it's based on a home with estimated market value of $350,000, taxable assessment of $267,000 and then two vehicles per household. And a, the grand list growth is also shown here. It's estimated as 0.33 to 0.75 for non-revaluation years and one percent in, in reevaluation years. Next slide, please. I have a different, a different next slide. So the estimated tax impact for the fire engine, the 50th percentile and being in the middle, the total cost per household would be $171.69 or an average of $8.59 per year. Next slide, please. The estimated tax impact for the ladder truck, this shows the whole schedule and the total would be $296.18. And again, the estimated impact for the ladder truck would be, based on the 50th percentile, $296.18 over the 20-year period. And the next slide, please. The estimated impact of purchasing both the ladder and the engine would be $467.87. And estimated, it seems like I have the same slide twice. Did I just read that? Estimated 50th percentile, $467.87 for purchasing both the ladder and the, the engine. Conveniently enough, the assessor's office has put on a tax calculator for purchasing the, the vehicles. You can go to the assessor's website and plug in the actual value of your home and your cars and come up with the individual cost that you will incur if this is to go through the way it is. It's important to remember that we're not actually going out to the bond market for a couple of years and that's why that initial chart showed the debt starting in 2025, I believe. But again, we're here to try to take advantage of avoiding a price increase that will result in us having to spend even more money to get these vehicles that we already know that we need. And I would like to take a moment just to acknowledge the members of the board of finance who are here this evening. Margaret Bratton and Carl Gisnerian, Charles Harvell, Brian Lovelace and Ellen Rattell. Thanks very much, everybody.
Thank you very much, Kathy. So the next steps, if this proposal passes tonight, the special town meeting, which is held this evening, that the, assuming approval, the executive will execute contracts tomorrow and it takes a, a bit of time to get the trucks ready in time for delivery, which would be about 2025 in February 2025. So those are the next steps for what happens in the process and you can put the next slide up. Who's going to leave this up for the remainder of the evening? Has been said by Chairman Palamas, the volunteer fire department in Avon is indispensable. The volunteers that show up every day as volunteers are incredible men and women who protect and defend us at great cost to their, and sacrifice to their own families themselves. So we owe all of the volunteer firefighters in town a great deal of gratitude and I'd like to offer a round of applause to all of them. They are always looking to fill the ranks, so we'll leave that up for the evening. Please jot down, take a photo, anything you can do to join. They're looking for volunteers of all stripes and, and strengths. So please take, take heed of that and if you can volunteer or know somebody wants to volunteer, there's, there's guys and gals and men and women here tonight that can, can help you and give you some more information on, on that. So I wanted to see if there's any other members of the official town departments that have any further comments. I don't see any, so I'm going to have some conversation, my first three, oh yeah, invite the council back up to the dais here with us. But I see Joe Spike, if you would like to address us, that'd be great.
I don't know if, oh, it's on, all right. Joe Spike, resident 115 Old Farms Road, also assistant fire chief and had the pleasure of being the chairman of the group of our members that, that did this whole process as far as specing these new trucks. And I'd like to take a moment to thank the town for their support during this process and to, for your support to get us to this, to this night. It's been a long time coming. So as Chief Appel mentioned about the current trucks, I'll start with the ladder. The current ladder is a 2001, again, reaching 22 years of service and by the time the new truck comes in, it'll be about 25 years. It does have some, some significant issues that, that need repair that Chief Appel also mentioned. I'll go into a little, a little more detail about that. It, it is going to take, bringing that truck to South Dakota to get those repairs done. And we just don't know really what, what they're going to find once they start to make, make the required repair. And speaking with the public works department and considering the fire study that was done, the recommendation was to replace the truck as opposed to making repairs on it. And how we got to the point of the trucks that we, that were, that we are on the program tonight, it started about, you know, mid, mid to end of 2021, where we started to look at what our current, our current fleet was and what were out there for trucks. Obviously, fire trucks change over the course of, of 22 years. So we really took a, a, a good look at what was out there. We looked at every manufacturer that made ladders. Again, we are, have some limits as far as length and height of our trucks and Pierce came up with a truck that could fit our limitations. They were the only manufacturer that could fit our length and height limits for our, for our fire stations. And, you know, one thing that we do understand is that, you know, it is, it is quite a bit of money and we always try to be good stewards of, of town, of town taxpayer money, but we can't in good conscience make, make the choice to, to repair something that we just don't, don't quite know what, what we're going to find when we start to repair it. And again, like I mentioned before, talking with public works and looking at the fire study that was done, that's how it came to the recommendation that we, that we have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Gina Klein, if you'd like to introduce yourself. Also, just to state your name and, and title and address for the, for the record as well.
My name is Gina Klein.
You might need to move a little closer.
How's this better? Okay. My name is Gina Klein. I live at 40 Frandell Drive in Avon. I've been a resident for about 20 years and a volunteer with the fire department for almost as long, 19 years. I have, I currently serve on the department as a firefighter. I'm a driver operator, so engine 14 is one of the trucks that I'm able to drive. I serve as explorer advisor and I currently serve as president of the board of directors. And it's as president of the board that I'm speaking with you tonight to convey our unanimous approval of this proposal that the apparatus committee has brought to the town that we're hoping to get approved tonight. What Assistant Chief Spike didn't mention about the apparatus committee is the numerous hours that they've spent putting the proposal together and coming to the recommendation that you see tonight. They spent two and a half years assessing the needs of the department, looking at that long-range apparatus replacement plan that the chief had referred to, made the decision based on the factors that Assistant Chief Spike had mentioned, that replacement really was necessary for these trucks. And they did their due diligence. They evaluated several manufacturers before really coming to the recommendation that said, based on how we operate, based on what the department needs, based on what the town needs, these are the right choices for us to have for, for this apparatus. So this information was presented to the board. They, they provided us with their, with, with their recommendation and, and we wholeheartedly approve of it. So we hope that the council and the residents here tonight recognize the efforts that went into that and, and also vote yes to approve those trucks. Thank you.
Thank you, Gina. I'd like to finally call on Jim Spike to make a comment or two.
Good evening. My name is Jim Spike. I live at 14 Yorkshire Lane. I am the town council's representative to the fire department. I've been in town since 1978, 40-year veteran of Avon, almost 40-year veteran of the Avon volunteer fire department. As you've heard from Chief Appel, Assistant Chief Spike and from President Klein, you know, we have 22-year-old vehicles we're dealing with here and we have a lot of firehouse limits. So the apparatus that this committee has worked so hard on is the proper apparatus that should be purchased. There is a, a long-time fire truck planning program that goes on at the fire department that we look over a number of years and we look at ages of trucks to see how these trucks roll off over time. The most interesting chart I saw tonight, and thanks to the chairman of the board of finance for it, is the debt rolling off. I think it's important to realize that as debt rolls off, we can then lay in these fire trucks on top of that debt over the years. And normally, we would buy these and my experience on the town council and the board of finance for 16 years, we usually paid for these out of capital. But this is a great opportunity to be able to purchase these trucks through bonding. Our debt's falling off and I think it's just really good time for the fire apparatus. So I would urge the residents of town that are here to vote yes for the apparatus.
Thank you, Jim. So going forward this evening, you as the public are invited to come up and give your two, three-minute pitch on support or opposition to the proposals tonight. And I'd ask that you stand at either microphone, we're going to go back and forth between the two microphones. I'd like you to come up, state your name and address clearly for the record and we can go from there. So anybody want to, from the public would like to speak? Yes, sir. Up to the microphone.
My name's David Burgoyne. I live at 95 Lawrence Ave. I'm also in the fire department. I've been in Avon for 34 years. I've been in the fire department. I've been in Avon for 34 years, I've been in the fire department for 34 years. I'm captain of Company Three and responsible for the two pieces of apparatus that we're proposing to replace today. I fully support purchasing the new apparatus. These apparatus go to, as, as the chief said, the majority of the calls in town because of their central location. In addition, we're the primary station when our surrounding towns call for mutual aid, so they go for that. And when you look at the ladder, the, not only the cost of repairing that ladder, but if that ladder's out for six to eight months to repair that, we have to rely on mutual aid, and that lengthens the time it takes to get the apparatus to the scene. So I would highly encourage everyone to consider supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Mark Zaccio, 15 Ridgewood Road. I'd like to echo Jim's comments. I, you know, I fully support the purchase, fully understand the fire department has sort of waited in the wings very patiently, as we've done other projects in town, to be able to support apparatus of this type. A couple of comments on the bonding. I'm not a fan of the bonding process. You know, we paid cash in those years, and we're sitting in a spot where we have tremendous bonding capacity in the future because councils didn't do this, right? So just think about that from a slippery slope perspective. It's really easy to continue to bond, but look back at the plan of conservation and development, think about all that public input that went into that and those high-target properties, that as the town manager likes to say, you want to keep some powder dry for when those opportunities present themselves. Think about that as you go forward, and you, because you're going to be presented with more of this. It's $250,000 to replace a plow truck, why not get four? We can afford it, there's plenty of bonding, you know, available. So just think about that as you go forward. Couple of quick questions. I think I heard Chief Appel, and I, and I know I heard both Mr. Spikes say, the apparatus will fit in the fire departments, right? Have we considered the weight as well? This happened before for those who are in the public, where we, we bought an engine, it was awesome, and then we found out it, it just didn't fit, and had to make a lot of changes to the Hawk Hill Fire Department to make it fit. So they will fit, right? We've considered the weight. Yeah, I, I knew we heard you say that, I just wanted to hear it again. Just wanted to hear it again. My second question's really for the council. If you go forward and you bond this, do you expect any bond premium? And if so, do you have any ideas what you're going to do with that? It's not a huge purchase, I don't know what the bond premium would, would be, the town manager or others may have that on the top of their head. I'd encourage you to think about putting that in undesigned surplus. I don't know where our ratio is compared to what our budget is, but as our budget rises, our surplus needs to keep pace with that for AAA bond rating, which puts us in a position to buy things like this. So just keep that in mind if you're going to bond it and get some premium, what you're going to do with those dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Yes, Joseph Gilberti, 45 Longview. Fully support this decision. Keep in mind that the, this is a volunteer fire department, so there's a big savings, and therefore they should get everything that they need. I thought it was a ridiculous question, and one of my questions was, will it fit in the garage? So happy to hear that. And another potentially silly question is, I noticed at one of the stations, there's a steep driveway, I'm wondering if the tail end of that ladder truck might hit the ground if even that was a consideration. And my other questions, as buying equipment and machinery myself, some of the basics are, the delivery time is two years, but sometimes it goes way beyond that, and if there's a, a penalty clause with the manufacturer, also what the warranty would be on the equipment, the maintenance, and lastly, the training, if the training is going to be the same as the existing equipment that you have, or if this will require new training, if the manufacturer's providing that training.
Okay, as far as the training goes, yes, we, the manufacturer would be coming out, and we would, we would have to get retrained on this specific apparatus. Actually, both apparatuses, we'd have to get trained on, new technology, new manufacturers, new equipment. We run, run through that. As far as the station design, it will fit. The anticipated right now is probably the ladder truck will be going to Company One due to the length of the ladder at 43 feet. The actual apron here at Company Three is about 43 feet, just shy. It will fit in Company Three if absolute need be, but the plan is to relocate the aerial to Company One. And the study from Center for Governmental Research showed that the highest target area for the aerial is the 44 corridor. So Company One has a much longer apparatus bay length, and the actual apron is much longer to fit that station, it's a little bigger. As far as the warranty, it's, I believe it's a standard two-year, the state of Connecticut requires a two-year warranty from the manufacturer. There's component warranties, engine, transmission, so forth, are warranted through the engine, engine manufacturers, and they, I think it's a five-year warranty on the engine and transmission, and there's paint corrosion warranties that are, extend out. On these particular trucks, you'll hear a lot of issues with corrosion, the road salts that are on the road. Both these trucks are coming through with galvanized frame, dip frame rails. The industry is, is touting that the galvanized frame rails won't corrode out like your normal steel frame rails. So that's, these trucks will have that on there also. So we've, we're trying to cover all the bases. Were there any other questions I, I didn't answer for you? The maintenance would be handled from the local vendor, which is Firematic here in Rocky Hill. They would handle all the service stuff, but we would also, our in-house mechanics do get training on it, and they would be able to handle light maintenance of the aerial in-house.
Have you got a question, sir?
Frank Roden, I live on 46 Woodmont. Projection as the town grows, are we looking at, you know, a purchase here five, 10, 10 years down the road for another truck, as well as the questions he had?
As far as, you know, purchasing another aerial device, right now, the plan, again, our, the fire department plan and, and the plan through government, Center for Governmental Research, didn't indicate needing two, two aerial devices for the town of Avon. We get credit, so our rescue truck, which is housed at Company One, that'll get relocated to a different station, is classified as a service company because it has a ladder and has ventilation equipment in it. So we get a bunch of credit for the rescue company being a service company as the, as a secondary ladder, actually, believe it or not, in, in, as far as the eyes of the insurance industry goes. So there's no glaring indication that we would need two aerial devices in the town of Avon.
Yes, sir?
First thing I wanted to say was, thank you to all the members of Avon Fire Department for their service, and the committee, I'm sure that spent a incredible amount, amount of volunteer time to pull together what trucks were needed and how they'd be equipped. So I just wanted to say thank you again, because I've been on some committees before, and, and volunteers don't get the credit they deserve, so I just wanted to say thank you first off.
Can I just interrupt you, just to give your name and address for the record, please?
Sure. My name's Chris Atia. I'm at 15 Woodhaven Drive, 39-year resident.
Thank you.
I've got a couple of questions. One was, when was the last fire truck replaced?
So the last fire truck that was actually replaced was, in 2020, we replaced a rescue truck. The rescue truck was a 1988 rescue. With the advent of COVID, actually, we were lucky to find a manufacturer that had one that they'd built for a demo, and all the trade shows were canceled that year, and we happened to be the first in line to contact them. So we, we were able to pick up the rescue truck prior to all the price increases, and they just wanted to unload it. So the rescue truck is a, is a 2023 years old. Prior to that, we picked up a mini pumper in 2018. That's a, it's on a Ford F-550 chassis, it's a small, very mini pumper, it's four-wheel drive, it does have a 1,500 gallon per minute pump, 300 gallons of water, very similar to what would be on the ladder, but it's more, a lot more maneuverable to get up into the Deer Cliff areas and some of the, the Company Two areas, Secret Lake area. Prior to that, we had two engines that were purchased in the 2016, Engine Seven and Engine Eleven.
So it's generally around every two to three years? Maybe not?
Probably. Our average, right now, our average fleet is 16 years old.
Right.
If you advertise out the whole fleet. So typically, we're probably running more closer to every five years.
For replacement?
To replacement.
Okay. Couple other questions. Somebody else is asking about the warranty, which you said was two-year, and I think you also said, he, he asked about maintenance, and I guess you said Firematic, they're the authorized repair people for this, these Pierce trucks?
Correct, they are the Pierce vendor, yes.
And the reason I say that is, people may not know this, I mean, you're replacing 22, 21-year-old fire trucks that are a lot less sophisticated. These fire trucks are probably the most sophisticated, you know, hook up your laptop to it. And so my kind of question a little bit further is, would, would Firematic handle all of that, or would Pierce come in?
No, so, so Firematic is the Pierce dealer, they're, they're the only Pierce dealer, I believe, in New England.
Okay.
They handle the New York, so the aerial's major service would be in their New York facility, which is just over the border into New York. They have a facility here in Rocky Hill that would do all the load testing, minor servicing, things like that, load testing, but if any major service, it would go to the New York office, which is their primary facility that handles aerial devices for Pierce, and they can do everything in-house.
So the key thing I heard is that Firematic is the authorized Pierce dealer?
Correct.
And distributor, and that they could handle basically anything on the sophisticated, these two pieces of equipment?
Correct.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. Did you guys test drive these fire trucks?
Yes. So we had, over the course of two and a half years, we had numerous vendors come in with their different aerial devices that were on the circuit. Pierce brought in a couple of their rigs, and we drove, we test drove this one. We also had an opportunity, this aerial device is the exact same aerial that Farmington bought in 2020. There's a couple upgrades that Pierce have done since that came out, but Farmington was nice enough to have them come out with their aerial. They spent about a half a day with us, with the committee, and we drove, they literally drove around everywhere in the town of Avon, through Pond Place, Farmington Woods, Deer Cliff, up and down the mountain, and, and really ran it through its paces, hit cul-de-sacs. They told us what the pros and cons of their truck were, and what they might like, what they would have done differently, or look at some of the options that Pierce has today. So we took the, again, the, the base spec, which is a cooperative bid, they, they offer HGAC, which is a cooperative bid process, so anyone can buy into it. Pierce sets the price for the nation. So anyone that buys into the, to the cooperative bid price from anywhere in the United States can get the truck at that price. It'll be cheaper than if we went out to bid directly. So, and then they, then you can add on the add-ons, you know, a couple upgrades or so forth.
From there.
Excuse me, sir, just wanted to interrupt. You've been going for about five and a half minutes, I just want to give other people an opportunity. I'm not sure how many questions more you have, but if you have more, we want to just kind of give everybody a fair opportunity to ask questions. So do you have any more questions? You can come back and ask them. Again, I just want to make sure I can open the floor to everybody.
No, I think that's it. I'm in favor of voting yes for these fire trucks, and I think it's, it would be good. It'll help us protect the town better. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Sorry, you got a question?
Yes, good evening. My name is Dave Whitney. I live at 13 Topath Lane. I moved to Avon when I was one-year-old. I want to say that I'm 100% in favor of this applica, of this expense. We need to give the volunteer firefighters the tools they need to do their job. I'm really not here with a question, I'm just a comment. I went on the website under your frequently asked questions, and question 12 was, what will you do with the old engines once they are removed from service? And the answer was, the old vehicles will be turned over to the Department of Public Works for disposal. These vehicles can either go to auction, sold through a third-party dealer, or donated to departments in need. And I just want to say, I think it would be fantastic, I think it would be good karma if we could consider donating these engines to other departments in need. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, ma'am?
Good evening. My name is Karen Solonia. I live at 308 West Avon Road. I've been a resident of the town for over 22 years. Both my husband and my son are volunteer firefighters with the town of Avon. I think tonight's presentation speaks volumes of the professionalism, the due diligence, and the thoughtfulness of our fire department, as well as our town council and the committees to evaluate options for us. I'm in strong favor of this proposal, not only for the safety of the residents of Avon, but also the safety of our firefighters who work every day to make sure we're safe. I'm in full support of this proposal.
Thank you. Any other comments? I feel bad cutting that gentleman off. Do you have any more questions?
Good evening. My name's Alex Beddelyan. I live at 252 Lovely Street here in town. I just wanted to ask you a couple of questions. I am in support of a resolution to purchase new fire trucks. However, I do not support this resolution to purchase these fire trucks, and I have a couple of questions as to the bid, the process, how you spec these trucks out. So in the proposals that you sent out, or the questions rather, that you had proposed to the town, you had spoken about combination fire apparatus not being an applicable thing in Avon, and I noted that the ladder truck is a combination fire apparatus. Also, it was noted in the reports that you are in need of replacing the tanker in a couple of years. Was it explored that you were going to possibly replace the engine that you're replacing now with an engine tanker as opposed to just the engine?
We did look at, at the options of an engine tanker, and one of the, one of the committees' considerations for an engine tanker was, this is the busy, this engine that we're replacing is the busiest apparatus on the fleet that we have. And we have a very narrow, limited area in town that is non-hydrated. So with an engine tanker, we would, currently, our engine, our tanker holds 3,000 gallons of water. The engine tanker would be looking at about 2,500 gallons of water. We'd have to downgrade the amount of water, and then we're driving a lot of weight and water around every day to go to every CO call, every call that we go on. And we felt it wasn't prudent to do that, to create an engine tanker, and to keep the tanker as a standalone tanker. Our current tanker is a 90, is a 1997. It's, it's a, it's a, I should say, a simple truck. It's an international. The manufact, it goes back to the manufacturer every year, Gowan's and I built it. There's no indications of anything issues with it, other than the fact that it's getting a little tired in, as far as age, but we're going to, because of the limited response, it goes on the least amount of calls that the town responds to, so we figure we can put that off for a couple of years. And we didn't want to combine that, make it a big engine tanker. And we have an issue with it fitting into a, a modern-day engine tanker fitting into the fire station.
Okay. And in the CGR report, it had noted that by 2030, you're looking to replace four apparatus in total to the tune of about $4.5 million. Is that correct?
I think they talked about Engine 10 in that study, the tanker, the, the two engines, which would be Engine, 14, Engine 10, the tanker, and the ladder being replaced in that timeframe. But right now, we're probably looking at three, these two, and then a third one in some due time.
Right, so it's suffice to say that there's possibility that if you were to replace it with an engine tanker and just replace the aerial- tanker and just replace the aerial device, then you could kind of kill three birds with one stone, more or less. You could replace an engine with an engine tanker, suffice two needs. If you're going to go with a pump on an aerial device, you're also dropping another piece of apparatus that might be due for replacement years down the road.
Our biggest thing is manpower showing up at a scene.
Sure.
And so we're finding, we're getting a lot of pieces on the road with one person. So having that ladder, I think we timed out. Having the ladder on the road with a tank and a pump on to make an initial knockdown, we feel is prudent.
Okay. And was it explored going out to other manufacturers, possibly, as you stated previously, purchasing demo trucks to cut down the cost? I understand that aerial devices especially, engines included, are drastically more expensive than they were a couple of years ago, but there could be potential cost savings in maybe getting a demo rig as opposed to a brand-new mid-mount tower ladder?
We've been scouring the demo market with Pierce for two years now. Part of our issue with coming across a demo truck is, you find one, by the time we get it, get the information, present it to the town council, get funds available, it's sold. And that happened to us probably at least two or three times. We've seen other vehicles on, not these purchases. We've made presentations or go to buy it, and then we find out that it's already sold. So the market is extremely tight. There's no, no one has production trucks that are coming off the line that aren't sold.
And you specifically, you had looked at other manufacturers, but you're sticking with Pierce?
We did look at, we did look at all the manufacturers. I believe we had KME in town, we had a bunch of the other vendors in town. We also went to FDIC, Huge Fire Trade Conference. The committee went out. We looked at every aerial manufacturer, we looked at every spec that they had, we compared them all. The biggest thing is the length of the vehicle. We have bay length requirements, we have height requirements to fit in the station as a backup to Company Three. So we looked at all those factors, and Pierce was the smallest profile truck that would fit our needs.
Okay. And it's, I'm guessing the recommendation of the truck committee that we're looking for a mid-mount tower ladder as opposed to a straight-stick aerial device? The reason I'm asking is, I know that Farmington has a mid-mount tower ladder. Simmsberry also has a tower ladder. So...
Simmsberry has two.
Right.
They have a tower and a straight. Canton has a straight-stick ladder. Farmington only has one tower.
And then the question really is, what is the necessity and the need in the town of Avon for a tower ladder device as opposed to a less expensive straight aerial device?
So we went, one, the straight aerial devices are typically a top mount, or not a mid-mount tower. So now we have a height issue. All our bays here are 12-foot-high. So our ladder currently was a European aerial, and it was able to come in at 11'4", so we were able to back it in. It backs into the station with literally two inches of clearance to back into the stations. Even our Company One, our headquarters station, has 12-foot doors. So a conventional rear-mount aerial with a ladder on top would not fit any of the firehouses. As far as the need for an aerial device and the maneuverability of it, we have all of the industrial drive areas, Darling Drive, Tower Lane, Security, Old Farms, the industrial facilities. We have the Mill Apartments, Avon Mill, Avon Wood Apartments. The new town center, Whole Foods, the second phase that's not built, which is going to be across the street from Market, is going to be taxpayer on the first floor, apartments on the second and third floor. That'd be three-story apartment, a three-story complex down in the town center. The Farmington Woods, the Pond Places, yes, they're single-family homes, but they're very tight clustered homes, and if a fire gets going in one of those buildings, they typically tend to run. So you need a lot of water, and you can use the aerial devices to kind of block other facilities. Our larger buildings in town, our churches, town buildings, and then you get into the single-family homes, a lot of them, a lot of people say we don't need aerial on a single-family. But a lot of our single-family homes are well over 3,000 square feet, up into the 10,000 or more. And they have extremely steep roof pitches, and they have long roof pitches. So our ground ladders can't reach the roof line, and our roof ladders can't reach the peak. We typically carry an 18-foot roof peak. Some of these peaks are well over 20, 24-foot from the ridge line, so to safely access a roof, if we have to get to a chimney or cut vent holes, we can't access it through ground ladders, so we have to use other means. So we try to get an aerial that can get up someone's driveway to make that roof accessible.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Are there further questions or comments? Micah?
I'm Micah Rowsey, one-two-nine Stagecoach Road. I just want to, just to comment, I'm incredibly impressed with the city, the committees that had to do anything with the presentation on why we need this. It's obvious to me, and I'm of no expertise to question any of it. So thank you. Absolutely in support for both resolutions.
Thank you. Are there further comments? I'll ask that two more times. Are there further comments? Final time, are there further comments? Seeing none, we will close the comment period. So I'm going to, going forward now, we're going to read each of the resolutions and vote on one at a time. We're going to, the process is to call for a show of hands. We ask you that you all have received a green wristband if you're qualified and eligible to vote tonight. We want you to raise your hand high when I call for yays or nays, and you will leave them there until we are done counting. Theoretically, we might be able to, in the eye of the moderator looking out at the audience, I might be able to see an overwhelming vote going either way, and we can call that without objection. I will call yea or nay as I see it from here to avoid you having strain holding your arms up all night. If the vote is close, we will go through that process and have that go forward. So the first motion, the first resolution before us is, shall the resolution appropriating 1.259 million for the acquisition of a fire engine and authorizing the issuance of 1.259 million in bonds of the town, as well as temporary borrowing for such purposes, be approved? Do I have a motion for that resolution? Motion's made. Second for that. All those in favor, raise your hand, say aye. All those opposed, say nay. In the eyes of the moderator, it looks like it's an overwhelming support in favor of that resolution, so we will consider that adopted. Second resolution, shall the resolution appropriating 2.172 million for the acquisition of a ladder truck and authorization of the issuance of 2.172 million in bonds for the town, as well as temporary borrowing for such purposes, be approved? Actually, I was a bit wrong in the Robert's Rules here. That motion was made earlier in the evening, so we're going to just be taking a vote on that motion. So all those in favor of that resolution, say, raise your hand for yes. All those opposed, in the eyes of the moderator, the eyes overwhelmingly have it, so we will consider that motion adopted. So before I close out this evening, I want to thank the town council and all the staff of the town of Avon, and the town clerk, and the town manager, and the board of finance, and everybody else in the fire department who has worked so diligently on this effort. I want to once again thank the incredible volunteers that we have that serve us every day in our volunteer fire department, and please take note of that if you'd like to volunteer. And just one final round of applause for all the volunteer firefighters. My reign of terror has come to an end. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Second? All those in favor, say aye. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.